Last off, we certainly want to welcome everyone to our Monterey City Council's special meeting agenda. We have two items on the agenda which we will be sharing with you shortly. But before we do that, I think many of people watching are pretty much used to Zoom now, and Google Meet, and other platforms. But we're going to ask our sensational Assistant City Manager Nat Rochan Asafera to explain the format of these meetings as directed by the governor. So Nat, if you will do that, and let people know how they can participate, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Reardon. We encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which has the shortest delay of approximately 10 seconds. Folks can watch at youtube.com/cityofmonterey, or sorry, forward slash cityofmonterey, or on the YouTube app, or Google Play, or in the Apple App Store. To make a public comment when viewers are watching live on YouTube or Channel 25, you'll see a lower third caption, also known as a Chyron, at the bottom of the screen. At that time, you can call into the conference line. Our phone number is area code 831-582-6500. Again, that phone number is 831-582-6500. That will get you into the system with no meeting code access needed. We do ask that you still dial *5 to raise your hand, and you'll be added into a queue to speak. That way, we know if you're just listening into the meeting, or if you actually intend to speak on that item. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it's their turn to speak. We do ask that callers please turn off all television or computer speakers, or go to another room when you're connected by phone, because any background noise will indeed cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each caller in the order of their hands raised, and also call out the last four digits of each caller's phone number before I unmute them. Or I sometimes may also call individuals based on caller ID as well. Those are the procedures for calling in and participating publicly in today's council meeting. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. All right, Nat, one more thing for us, please. And in a moment, Nat is going to put up on our screen a flag, and then I will invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, very good, over Colton Hall. So if you would, please join me with the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, Nat. Our meeting has been called to order, and I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce your caring city council. And they'll give you a wave as we go along, and that's Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, Ed Smith, Tyler Williamson. And it's my honor to be the mayor of the city which we all love and take care of together. So we'll go into our meeting, and we have a public appearance with respect to receiving an informational report on physical distancing and crowd management on Municipal Worf Number One, also known as Fisherman's Worf. And to give staff some direction, before we do that, I'd like to put this in the context of having just returned from a walk and seeing the ash fall. Certainly, all of our hearts and thoughts go out to everyone who has experienced the fires directly. The evacuations are increasing tremendously. We have Monterey's own fire department helping with the various fires. And so we certainly are thinking about all of the folks being impacted by that. Secondly, we're looking at why are we having this meeting? There are two things on the agenda, both of them as a direct result of one of three pandemics that we're facing. The first one, of course, is COVID-19, and that's the health of everybody, health and safety, which leads into the second pandemic, and that's the economic devastation that we as cities and governments and the entire economy are facing. And that applies, I think, to some of the things we will be talking about on the Worf as well. Then, of course, the third pandemic is social justice, and we haven't forgotten that. And overlaying all that is climate warming. So all these things do contribute to where we are on today. So from a macro viewpoint, some of those things we can do things about, and we're going to try to do everything we can. I'm really proud of our city staff, our council, and everyone, our boards, commissions, citizens, who really are practicing stepping up, because working together is how we get through all this. And obviously, safety is the keystone. When we're safe, when COVID-19 has run its course, our economy recovers, and we can get to work on climate warming. We can bring employees back. I just talked to one of my neighbors who, after several years on his job, 35 out of 40 people got laid off. So he was receiving unemployment, and of course, the fact that the CARES Act hasn't been renewed, so he's missing that increment that he was getting from the federal government. So again, our hearts go out to them as well. And then, lastly, and thank you for letting me, because I've been thinking about this, just like all of you, all of the teachers and parents are doing their absolute best, including our council, and working on social distance, trying to do the best that they can for all of their students and families. So you take an impossible job, and you multiply it by two. I don't know if there's anything twice as impossible, but certainly, I just wanted to give my gratitude to all of the people working at home, the teachers and the bus drivers, all of the people that are keeping us going. And I certainly understand the parents and the students who already were way more computer literate than we are, but they're going to be even superior, so maybe that's one good thing that comes out of this. So I just wanted to share that to let you know that your city, those who are watching, are doing everything we can within our power. We're one of the few cities that I know of who did business, small business grants, who have a very robust, excuse me, robust renters' assistance program. And so there are a lot of things that have been going on during the pandemic, and I expect that many of our meetings in the immediate future will be driven by this whole triple pandemic that we're facing. So I share that with you to put into context of what's going on on Worf One. We've certainly heard from the merchants and customers, and we've heard from our constituents. And without question, safety, in my mind, is our number one priority. So I'll turn it over to our very sage city manager, who's going to take it from here, Hans Usler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and if council will permit me also, 60 seconds of speaking about the current fire situation. The fire situation is affecting our employees on various levels. We have about 22 folks working in police and in fire that have been evacuated at their homes, who live in that area. I believe it's 10 police officers, 12 firefighters that live in Santa Cruz and the Salinas River Fire Area that have been evacuated with their families from their homes. I know about at least one other employee in our ranks that is also evacuated. We know about one employee who, I believe, has lost already some of the property that they own in that area. Parallel, we have 18 firefighters out right now. We sent another engine out at lunchtime to protect homes now. The task there is simply hose down houses. That's where the fire lines are right now at the River Fire. And the last one, not least, we also have two police officers in support function in the fire area as well of bringing people out of the area where mandatory evacuations are. So I want to recognize it's a whole all-hands-on-deck effort. We are all affected by that, and we are responding to all the challenges that we described in addition to the two fires. It is a very dire situation. At the same time, I want to let the residents know and the council that all fire stations that we staff are fully operational and fully staffed at the normal levels. So while we have fire engines out at the lake fire, at the River Fire, and police is out, the fire stations are fully staffed with the full contingent of firefighters. So for those who are concerned about that as well, our local fire response in the city of Monterey, Pacific Grove, and Carmel is at normal levels, despite the fact that we have teams out in those fire areas that I mentioned. So with that, I thank you for giving me that opportunity to state that. I will go into the topic in front of us, which is basically, we want to discuss with the city council potential measures that can be used to manage crowds that we have seen on Worf Number One. And I'll try to share my screen here right now, and hope that this works. Hang on. So today, we want to jointly figure out with you and the public, and the merchants, and whoever else will help us with their input and their suggestions, what kind of topics, what kind of issues do we have at Fisherman's Worf, and how can we help to mitigate them? It's, again, one of those presentations that you do not have examples for since simply we haven't dealt with those topics before. But a good way of introducing the topics is just to talk about what have we done so far with respect to COVID-19, what has the Worf especially experienced over the time? As you know, in the middle of March, everything was shut down by the governor's orders, and just on May 30th, the restaurants were allowed to reopen again with reduced indoor seating. The businesses embraced that opportunity. They did investments to comply with the industry guidance that was imposed on us by the CDC, as well as by the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA. And employees were hired back. On June 30th, the city, realizing that this is an area of meeting Worf One where you cannot really maintain social distancing, we ordered a mandatory face covering for Worf One. And we also included that for Canary Row, but right now, we are talking just Worf One. That basically is one extra step that goes beyond the guidelines set by the state. As we basically said, all those exceptions, with the exception of medical reasons, all those exceptions that the state is allowing you, we are not allowing you that on Worf One. You have to wear a face mask. And we started enforcement on that very weekend that followed, 6:30, and have since then enforced the face covering order on a daily basis using a mix of community services officers and court compliance officers. On July 8th, the county was put back on the list of monitoring counties, and we had to close the restaurants. And with that, layoffs were issued again for some of the employees that just were hired back by the Worf operators. Same day, the state said, yet you can have outdoor dining operations. And what that meant for the restaurants, of course, is that there is an additional burden, because while they could have 50% of the seating indoors, the outdoor space is even more limited. And so the restaurants, again, switched from the reduced indoor dining to an even stronger reduced outdoor dining operation, and that required them also to comply with brand-new outdoor dining guidelines that were issued again by the California Department of Public Health, as well as Cal OSHA. This industry guidance requires the spacing of parties six feet apart, and with that, looking at the space that is available, and also having a 20-foot-wide fire lane on the Worf at any, every time not occupied by tables, it makes the operation of outdoor dining very challenging to come into profits there or basically keep people employed as the Worf restaurants are doing it. Last weekend, we became aware of the crowding issues in the week before. And last weekend, we tried something out, and we reduced the parking capacity on the waterfront parking lot by about 50%. Basically, what we had hoped to achieve with that is that since less people can park in the waterfront lot, we may also have, as a result of that, less visitors on the Worf. And I can tell you that on Saturday afternoon, this looked like a winning strategy. The restaurants were reporting that they had still lines in front of the restaurants waiting to be seated, but also the retail businesses were reporting that they had also their normal inside crowds, but we didn't have a crowd as large as was reported just a week earlier. What happened then on 8:15 in the evening was the power outage that we all suffered. And with that, everyone had not the capacity to cook. Canary Row, Worf One, two areas where we have outdoor dining. Worf One got restored about 90 minutes earlier with respect to the power than Canary Row, and with that, people migrated also from the Worf, from the Canary Row towards the Worf to have seating there. And the Worf was, again, filled at a higher capacity than it was during the whole day when we had reduced parking by 50%. What I present to you here is something that I really value, is a mind map. And what this mind map does is it helps me, and it helps staff, and hopefully, it's helpful for you as well, to identify all the different touchpoints that are important to know when you talk about crowd control, or when you talk about measures that we feel are necessary to be implemented after you've heard the input from all the different stakeholders, neighbors, residents, operators, associations, et cetera. At the center of this is the Fisherman's Worf, as the operators of the restaurants, the retail businesses, as well as the businesses such as the whale watching and the fishing industry. And you see here, the Fisherman's Worf is an economic engine. It employs literally hundreds of folks that are paying their rent from that income. It spreads out into the restaurants, into the retail shops. A big part of the operation is also sightseeing, whale watching tours, and fishing industry. And I want you to remember that when we talk about possible measures, because some of those measures directly are easy to implement, if you consider them, but others are way harder to implement for retail shops and sightseeing. And we'll get to that when the time is right. The Fisherman's Worf is, we need to recognize this, a huge tourist destination. It's a draw for locals and regional folks, but it's also a draw for anything from the state of California to our nation. And you also saw that, again, foreign languages are spoken again on the Worf because they come from foreign countries to Fisherman's Worf. What's going on, and this goes to the left-hand side, COVID-19 industry guidance. The Worf is in the guidance, is in compliance with what COVID-19 industry guidance has issued. Their employees are wearing face covering. We require face covering for the customers as well when they go inside the shops. The shops are advising them, if they don't wear a face mask, they have to wear it. Outdoor seating, we have the spacing accomplished. The spacing between parties is six feet. We had a discussion about plexiglass. We have figured that question out as well. And also, the retailers are all in compliance with what is required from them. So Worf One, I can tell you today, is in the high 90% of compliance. Why don't I say 100%? Well, you know, if I say 100%, something will pop up and will degrade that to 99%. So we have widest compliance on Fisherman's Worf, Number One, as mandated by the state. What we also have, we put additional measures in onto Worf One that go beyond what is necessary. We have increased signage on the Worf. We created the administrative citations. We basically said, you have to wear a mask. We don't care about the state exceptions, except for the medical exceptions. And we did another measure last weekend where we tried the reduced parking in the waterfront lot, and I shared with you how I felt this way. And when we go now to think about what are we going to do, that's the topic of overcrowding, I want you to remember that there are certain facts that... I want you to remember that there are certain facts that play a role when we try to find an equation for how do we measure overcrowding? Or how do we limit crowding on the Wharf? We have called that facts. We have an outdoor seating capacity. We know how many seats are being occupied by folks when everybody sits at the table. We also know what is the maximum capacity inside the businesses? And what is the maximum capacity on water crafts? Because you know that when people want to go fishing with one of the fishing operators, they go across the pier, across Wolf Number One, go onto the boat, and then they disappear for a couple of hours until they return with their catch. Same applies of whale fishing. So these are numbers that we know, but they are also numbers that we really do not know at what time they reappear on the Wharf and what effects they have. As solutions that we thought about is can we limit attendance? Is there a magic number that we can identify and say, hey, that's the number? Let's work with that number. And we also did some research with respect to other peers. Pier 39 in San Francisco comes, came to mind, and Santa Monica Pier. And they have all a different set of geographical access points that we do not have. With that, also egress issues. It is a little crooked compare or a little, it's not easy to have a straight comparable there with those two peers, but they also provided us with some ideas. And I will go to some of the measures. We can, we could, and I'm not saying we are suggesting. And then, as I said before, this is not a staff recommendation. We want to hear every single one of the residents that want to call in, every single one of the operators, et cetera. And most importantly, we need to hear what you, the council, want. And we will transpose that into measures. But here are some possible measures. We can limit parking in the waterfront. We can close all beaches and basically say, going forward from now on, all beaches in the city of Monterey are closed for the remainder of our summer season. And with that, of course, less people will come to the city of Monterey. We can require online reservations for restaurants. It will reduce waiting in line. If you know your reservation is at 6:15, you will show up at 6:10 and you will be seated at 6:15. So you don't have those folks that are walking up and waiting line there. I apologize. Negative is you have to have planning in place from the side of the customer. So it's not a chance for folks basically to just drop by and say, hey, do you have a table for me? Like it's happening right now. What are we doing if we require online reservations for the retail shops? What if somebody says, hey, I want to go and buy souvenirs or t-shirts here? Do we have to require to have online reservations there? Probably not likely. Whale watching depends to a degree also on people who make spontaneous decisions to go whale watching. Now, going fishing trips, as I understand that, that's reservation-based business. But whale watching depends also for those tourists to come and spontaneously decide, okay, let's jump on the boat and take a tour with that operator as well. Another measure could be, we have a centralized table reservation on top of the Wharf. Basically, you have one concierge that assigns tables to, based on input received from the customers. If somebody knows they want to go to Fisherman's Grotto or to Domenico's Cafè Fina, et cetera. I apologize if I don't name all here, but maybe they can be guided from the centralized reservation there. We can monitor the crowds and we can say, okay, that's enough now. How do we know it's enough? Well, a very simple rule that I would say is you know a crowd when you see it. So if we see a crowd, we can limit access. Another thought model is we can calculate the overall square feet that we have on Wolf Number One. And we can say, hey, if there has to be a six-feet social distancing accomplished, what is the maximum number of people that we have can allow to be on the Wharf? Calculating based on the number of seats that people will have taken, number of visitors that are inside a retail shop, number of folks that may be on the boat. And then you know also how many square feet is left over. And you can give that a shot as well to calculate that number. And like I said to you earlier, an idea is also closing all beaches for the rest of the season or maybe consider also a partial beach closure. So with that, council, I have given you a broad overview over the topics. As I stated to you earlier, we need to hear from you. We need to hear from the public. And once we have heard from all parties involved, I think the work is for us as staff to put this together into a possible emergency order so that it becomes effective this weekend if council desires to do something like that. And then we'll bring it back to you for ratification on September 1st. But I think our presentation showed you how complex the issues are. And I hope it also showed you that this is a very moving target. It changes from hour to hour to a certain degree. And I think you will hear from the public. And I know that there will be some very good ideas being brought forward that we really need to jointly figure that out right now. And with that, I conclude my presentation for right now.
Okay, thank you very much, Hans. Very thorough presentation, as always. I appreciated the flow chart that you showed us with all of the complexities involved. So going forward, after the city manager's presentation, what we're soliciting at this point is we're not adopting regulations tonight, but what we really want to do is hear from the public. That includes obviously our residents and our business people, our operators, many of whom are residents also. And then for the council to weigh all of those ideas and then to give direction to our staff. So council, did you want to ask questions at this part? Or should we just find out what the public has to say and share with us? I'm seeing nodding heads. So I think we're going to hear from the public, which we very much value. And again, I want to remind everybody, we do receive your emails and we monitor next door and we see all the social media. So we appreciate you keeping us informed. Matt, how many folks do we have ready to speak on this tonight?
All right, you've got about eight callers so far. And we just pulled the chyron about a minute or four seconds ago. And we've got three folks with raised hands.
Okay, so we're looking at three minutes. So I think that's going to work at this point. Not that everyone has to take it, but again, we're really very much interested in, as I said before, safety is number one. And the only way that works is all of us working together. And I think it was pointed out by Hans Uslar. We have to remember what can we do as a municipality, as a city? There's some of these things, as Hans was sharing, these are state mandates and county mandates. And some things are within our control and other things are not. But we want to come up with the best package to keep everybody safe. So with that, Matt, let's open it up to public comment, please.
Okay, we'll pick it up with a comment from Mary Alice Dennis. Hi, Mary Alice, thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to praise the city of Monterey for all the things that they have done to support Fisherman's Wharf by partnering with the Wharf to give away free masks and managing and supporting the no mask requirement issued of $100 fine, enforcing the social distancing requirements. And the Wharf restaurants can face their tables a minimum of six feet and placing banners and signs on the Wharf, the Wharf businesses, informing visitors that if there's no mask, no service. And so we also are praising the city for closing the two beaches and also having both the half the Wharf parking lot. It really reduced the crowds. And we saw that what the city has accomplished has been really effective. But as you mentioned, of course, when the power went out, then things didn't go so well back. In the meantime, all of the proportions that the city took were extremely successful. So that's what I'd like to say.
Great, thanks, Mary Alice. Appreciate you calling in. Our next caller is from Monterey Bay Whale Watching. Hi there, you're live with the city of Monterey, council.
Hello.
Hi there. Can you please walk away from the speaker, either your TV set or your computer? Because we're getting some feedback.
Yeah, I just turned off the TV, YouTube.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, my name is Nancy. I own Monterey Bay Whale Watch. And I just wanted to point out that obviously just happens with all these fires that might change everything, where you may not even need to worry about this for the next couple of weeks because people are being told to stay indoors. We've already gotten cancellations for the weekend because ash is falling. So I just wonder if it will even be as crowded in the next week or two, given the fires are going to be happening for a while. So that was my one point, if this is even necessary, given what just happened. And also, again, it's a short time till the summer is over. You know, just a few weeks till Labor Day. And the issue is for the weekend and things like cutting off the parking and the beaches have worked. So it doesn't seem like it's a long-term problem to really change much at all. And given everything is outside on the Wharf, you know, it's not crowded inside. And of course, I am a business owner and we do rely on the people. I mean, like you said, we do have walk-in people that sign up at the last minute. So we're already, I'm sure you're aware that the business, you know, we are, and I know others are already greatly suffering because, you know, our boats are taking much fewer people. We have much, you know, less than half capacity. And weekdays are not crowded at all. Weekdays are very slow. We're barely getting out with one trip in the morning on weekdays. So really, the issue is on the weekend and there's only a few left. So I just wanted to point out, because it's really necessary to make a, you know, a big change. And if you have to, my idea also is making the Wharf like a road. You know, having a line in the middle where people go down one way on one side and the other way on the other side, that way you're not bumping into people. You know, you can stay more of a distance. And also the idea, I don't know if the restaurants would make some of the tables at the head of the Wharf or closer to the bathroom for that restaurant? The big fish grill that's not open and there's space there. I just wonder if some of the tables can be spread out further to create more space on the Wharf. Those are just my two ideas, just, you know, you must make more changes. And, you know, I just want to point out, like I said, we're already suffering just a huge loss. And I'm personally not going to know how I'm going to make it through the winter months because we're not making enough money in the summer to cover the expenses. So I mean, if the city does something drastic to reduce the number of people, then I hope they would reduce the money we have to pay each month for the rent and all the other fees. Anyway, those are my points and thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. We will go to our next caller and Ray Kelly. Our caller 6556. Go ahead, please state your name.
Okay, yes, my name is Kelly Gray and I am a local resident of Monterey. I want to thank you for taking my call and you for having the meeting. I just, for example, the people we, I won't make you do it. Noticing that I, my friend and I, we frequently ride the bike path along towards Marina and towards Pacific Grove and that those crowds increase, especially on the weekends, during the week. I would just like to, if it's possible, to express maybe an idea in regards to the Wharf. I understand, obviously, it's a very tourist-attractive area. It's universal in terms of the amount of money that it needs to make. But if there is a way that, sorry, if there is a way that each restaurant seems to have their own little hostess desk, which is outside of their restaurant, if there is a way to maybe possibly move those hostess desks out towards the front of the Wharf entry to where customers who are either walking in or who have possibly been able to even make an online reservation to where they actually make their reservation there to allow them more space on the Wharf possibly so that they are not trying to maneuver around long customer lines. That will probably be helpful. As well as with people who want to go in and do for merchants and retailing to still do that headcount. I noticed that now a lot of people, not just on the Wharf, but in local businesses around Monterey seem to be kind of laxing on the headcount that are right into businesses. And so I think that still needs to be addressed, even if people are always wearing face coverings or maybe not wearing face coverings. When it comes to the beaches, I am all in favor of shutting those down. The traffic, even down in my area, down by Del Monte Beach, is very ridiculous to where it's actually encroaching a lot on our residents' turkey. And if it's possible, I just noticed that it was nice to drive and actually see that the beaches were not overpopulated. And I think if you're going to educate, which everybody should be educated now in terms of what is expected, the signs are being ignored. Our resources for the beaches and having office fairs do all of that stuff is being overpacked right now to where there's too much of the public and visitors coming into town to where you don't have the resources to keep educating. The education process, to me personally, is done. And I can appreciate the findings, but when you see people who are camping out on the beaches and leaving excessive trash, it needs to just be closed until whenever, even if it needs to be indefinite. I think the parking is also a good idea as well to limit, you know, people coming in and out. So I appreciate all of your efforts and I hope that this can be a continuum thing as we go through this COVID process. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Our next caller is Dorit Gersh. Hi, Dorit, thanks for joining us.
Hi, I'm a resident of Monterey. I want to really, really thank Alan for helping me with the rental issues. He really got involved and stepped up. And I just want to remind the councilmen and the politicians here that election is coming up and to be mindful that 75% of the rentals here are in Monterey. So I was having a suggestion for the people that are losing their homes during the fires. Maybe one of you want to talk to the hotels and motels of Monterey and maybe find a way to keep them there. There are vacancies here in Monterey, maybe contact Mangold or C and C to make sure that they could house these people temporarily. I mean, I know, you know, it's a big loss and these people have pets and animals. It's devastating. So if we could help them out in any kind of way, that would be great, you know, for these poor people. And as far as the rental situation here, it's still a disaster in California. My stepmom and my dad live in a rental, a luxury building with a doorman. And they've been living there for 50 years. And they only pay 15, 25 for their place. And you get a doorman, it's a two-bedroom, one bath, overlooking Manhattan, mind you, it's clean. And I just think it's just not fair. And also, my friend is disabled. There is a breeze on the increase in rent for disabled and elderly in New York, and they should do that here. I don't know, you know, what's going on with Gavin Newsom, the 7% increase. I mean, that's a lot of money for people that don't have a lot of money that make $50,000 or less. I mean, to me, it's ridiculous about this. I can't, why can't we follow New York and what they're doing? I'm not understanding that. So I just like, I know you guys can't do much, I guess, but it's just really, you know, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just like really upset over this. I'm just like really upset over this and I just wish something would happen. Because, you know, they could do whatever with the rents here and it's a lot of money with, you know, 7%, what is it, about 7% or something like that? It's just crazy to me. And I just wish something would come of it. So thank you for letting me vent. And Alan, I told my friends about you. So I appreciate your whole, whole lot. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next caller is Wendy Brickman. Hi, Wendy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, that's crazy. And I just come on behalf of Wharf and also as a resident of the Wharf. And I really wanted to thank the city for their proactive approach to the pandemic. It's been a great work ever since. And they've been, all of you guys have been so backed, which I truly personally appreciate. And in working with the Wharf, collaborating and giving away thousands of free masks with us in association with Gathering for Women and the Fisherman's Wharf Association, I can say beginning in mid-June, we were giving 400 masks out an hour. And now it's like very few. And of course, the issuing of the hundred-dollar fines definitely helped, which was, I think, a great, great idea and it protects the public and our employees. And also the banners and the signs you produce have been very, very helpful that we have on the wharf and also the wharf businesses, which inform the visitors, again, no mask, no service. And I really appreciate the city as far as their transparent communication with the daily updates that Lori Welga has been sharing with us and the mornings with the manager. And lastly, I'll say that I think Nancy brought this up, the fires are just horrendous. And I am very concerned that there's going to come to Monterey or California because they're just raging. And if you look at how high it's all over the state. So again, I'm not sure that we're going to be looking at too many crowds this weekend or the next weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Our next, next call here is six four nine one. Hi, you've joined the call.
Hi, my name is Jason Little and I would first of all say thank you for your time today. And second of all, my wife and I moved here in the beginning of the summer and we are absolutely just so excited to be residents here. Just from listening to everyone speak and from understanding, just try to understand this issue, I do understand that for the next couple of weeks, we may not have the same pressures that we've had before with tourism, which I think gives the city the right amount of time to take some action and to put in more policies versus structures that can be supportive to everybody who is for the remainder of the pandemic. So my idea, in this general speaking up loud, would be that I believe that the exchanges on the wharf need to meet each other, whether they're one of the nice, doesn't rush up or the whale watching businesses. I think to find a way for them to all support each other will be really beneficial in the long run. So what my idea would be moving forward for any weekend that projects to have a large will in tourism, which I understand will not be this weekend. But if possible, like other large destinations across the world, where you have a way to enter, which we do by Harbor House, the entrance on to Wharf One. When you walk on, if you were to go through some sort of regulated, like key eye, where you pay a small fee, nothing harsh, we have crowds of thousands of people coming tourists on the weekend. No residents know where to come out to deal with that on their own time unless they have a job for some business down on the wharf. So they impose a small fee for those tourists on weekends that are high towards vegan. Then to have that fee then be spread out to all the businesses, the whale watching businesses and the restaurants, be beneficiary for all of them. And it could also maybe then put a small dent into the heavy splits of tourism on the weekends. And you believe that closing for an element like the beach would put up stronger forces and stronger crowds into places like Canary Road. So I think that those systems, while they can, like play small, I would say restricting on how many people might show up, like party, I think larger structures like a beach because our wharf is a worldwide attraction. And because of that, I believe we should bring them to treat it as such. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Little. Appreciate your comments. Our next caller is Esther Malkin. Hi, Esther.
Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to make a comment about if we were doing so great with the choices that the council and staff have made up until now, we wouldn't need to have this meeting. This meeting is really just for optics, just like what we've been watching all summer long. Because if everything was being done possible at the beginning of the summer, we wouldn't be having this conversation at the end of the summer. So the same way that staff wants to take credit for going above and beyond the stain requirements in some aspects, they chose and the council supported the choice of not going above and beyond of some of the other aspects. And we have turned this into the problem that we have now. Obviously, the business owners that have spoken don't have a problem with what's going on. But clearly, the fact that you even have this meeting is because the other people that are living in the city and not just the businesses do have a problem. And they came out and they localized it and therefore we have this meeting for the optics yet again. But in the meantime, this conversation is not lived. None of what is being brought up now has not been brought up before. So what exactly is going to be accomplished now at the end of the season by having another meeting or yet the same thing to be said are working so wonderfully by one group and the other group still not satisfied is essentially a waste of everybody's time. It really makes no sense to keep doing this because there has been no political will to actually make the difference to avoid us from getting to the point that we're at. You have already set a precedent for how this city is going to operate. And you have become the one that everybody can look to and see what they can get away with. We closed the beaches on July 4th and that was a real closure. By closing two small beaches this past weekend, you did really nothing. All you did was funnel the traffic, the beach traffic, further up to Del Monte Beach. So that was, again, just for optics. If you're really going to do something, then do it. Otherwise, not having meeting after meeting after meeting for no outcome to be any different. There have been no consequences. That's why they keep happening. The consequences and enforcement has been minimal.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Esther. Our next caller is Janine Chikarat. Hi, Janine. Hi, Janine.
Hi, Nat.
Hi. Yep, we can hear you.
I'm Janine Chikarat. Okay, good. I'm Janine Chikarat, I'm the managing director of the proposal repellent spot. First of all, I just want to say, you know, thank you to all of you. We're living in the middle of pandemic. These are not normal times. And I believe that everybody and all of our elected officials are doing the best they can and all the city managers and the county staff to try to help us all work together. And I know that everyone's working on a regional approach, that's what happened over Fourth of July weekend. And I'm sure that we'll be hearing some things down the road and how you guys are going to handle this moving forward. The reason I'm calling in right now is I was listening about the fire and the comments about this hotel. Our hotel community for years has responded anytime there's been a fire by giving hotel room rates that are lower cost and housing as many people as possible. We had the Napa fires, people flooded to our destination from the Bay Area because the air was so bad when our hotel was open. We certainly did not price gouge anybody. We made it available to them. We're a pet-friendly hotel. I know there's some hotels that aren't pet-friendly, but they even welcome people, especially in our community with pets. So I just want to say that we are taking care of our community, as a hotel community and hospitality community right now. And, you know, it's just trying times. And again, you know, I believe that everybody honestly is trying to do the rest during a pandemic and uncertainty and something that hopefully won't happen for another 100 years or in any one of our lifetimes moving forward. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Janine. Our next caller is Jean Rash. Hi, Jean.
Yes, thank you. This is Jean Rash. And I'm wondering if this isn't somewhat a mass problem in the same way that Whole Foods has calculated how much space they have and how many people can safely socially distance while shopping. And I think the number is around 40 for them. But that number doesn't matter. But it seems that you could calculate how many can be in each store. You give the boats a free pass because they're going to get on the boat and be off the wharf. And you find out how much space can be on the promenade to be six feet apart. And that's the number you allow. And then when it's full, you wait till the group leaves and then you allow more in. To me, it's a mass problem. However, I think Esther has a point. If you aren't going to have a monitor at, say, the harbor, you know, the entrance to the wharf as suggested by an earlier caller, if you really aren't going to do it, then don't do it. If you're going to have an idea of safety, then it would have to really be implemented with some kind of recognition of are you going to enforce it and what does that mean? And I hope this is helpful. Thanks for all your efforts. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Jean. Our next caller is Kayla Fossum. Hi, Kayla.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, there's a bit of a language. Hi, this is Kayla Fossum and I'm just here as a virtual resident to say that something needs to be done because I've seen the pictures of the wharf. I haven't been down there recently. But I can say this past Saturday evening, I just went to Del Monte Beach just to like look at the sunset. It was totally out of control. There was absolutely no social distancing. There were large crowds, both on the sand and in the water, no mask. I saw two couples wearing masks. That was it. There must have been, seriously, 150 people right there. This is unacceptable. I know you guys are, you know, spread thin on police staff. But we've got to do something. There's got to be a solution for the wharf. I do appreciate you limiting the parking to the wharf this past weekend. I think that's a good move. But Labor Day weekend's coming up. We need to shut down the beach, number one. And number two, the wharf needs to be regulated beyond just the parking, you know? I'm sorry for the businesses. I really am. But you know what? What good is your business and your profits or your lots of profits if you're sick in the hospital, if you're on a ventilator for months, if you die? I mean, this is getting serious, folks. We're going into the flu season. All the experts say we are going to be slammed. It's going to start in September and it's going to go to the end of the year. So I really hope pooling resources together, do whatever it takes to control these crowds. They are out of control. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kayla. Our next caller is Lorna Mopet. Hi, Lorna. Thanks for joining us.
Hello?
Yep, hi.
Yes, thank you. I applaud you for taking action on the crowds from the wharf. As a person who must walk the wharf every day, I fear for my life. Too many people do not take the word seriously. I call these people the silent assassins. They threaten us all. The acquaintance of mine just died of COVID. He didn't take it seriously. He felt reckless but didn't go to the hospital. He was dead by nightfall. COVID kills quickly to some of our strongest and he was strong. A solution to the crowd would be either shutting down Monterey completely, as we did in the beginning, or the tourists go, there's nothing in Monterey, it's shut down. Or if we have a official, literally a policeman or a security guard at the front of the wharf and the wharf is blocked up, so only a family and one at a time or two at a time can come on the wharf and they have to wear masks. And then there's a security guard on the wharf active where the restaurants are to make sure they keep their masks on. We might be able to funnel some business there as long as that security guard can keep the social distancing. There's a lot of honorary people that are trying to challenge and they just don't understand COVID. They don't believe this. So unless you do that, we're just going to have to have the continued problem of people dying. We've got to have guts, you know? We've got to have guts and say, no, selfish people are going to have to go home. And that's what it's going to take. And if we don't have the guts, then we're just going to have to die. That's it. So thank you.
Thanks, Lorna. Our next caller is Luis Osorio. And Luis, thank you for joining.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager. Good afternoon. Bye and the rest of the city council members. I guess what the comment I want to make is we are here dealing with human nature and we have to take that into account first and foremost, after six months of everybody being mostly enclosed at their homes with the essential workers doing their job to, you know, support whoever. I spoke with Hans a week or so ago about this and I appreciate all the work that Hans and his staff have done. I think we need to come up with an intelligent solution here, something that goes, you know, beyond whatever the state is doing. I don't know really what other communities we have, you know, with Wharf are doing. The wharf and the recreational trail have become off limits for most residents. I don't go down there because, you know, it's just too crowded. The scene a week and a half ago was terrible. I think we need to ask the business owners to regulate themselves. They cannot rely just on the city and tell us that they're offering masks and paying for free when it is them that are benefiting, you know? I mean, I understand the economics and the fact that the business needs to be open. But let's not forget that these people have enjoyed utterly cheap visits from the city for the longest time. And they need to be responsible. You know, I'm with the comment that a couple of colleagues have made earlier that we need to meter how many people are at the wharf at a given time. And for that, you know, you need to have, you know, a line, you know? And you need to have a concern, as somebody mentioned, that is going to let people go in and out to dine and other people that are going and another separate line for people that are going in for other businesses. You know, it's really an incredible situation and we're all learning as we go. And, you know, I still say my suggestion, you know, closing the beach is not a solution for anybody. That is just not going to work. And, you know, you're going to be limiting, you know, open space access to people that are basically quarantined, you know, for most of their lives. And a lot of them are going crazy and trying to solve it from other issues. Limiting parking is a good start and I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Luis. We appreciate your call. And Luis is our last caller into our conferencing system with his hand raised. So that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, very good. Again, we always appreciate everyone's input. We heard some really good ideas, and that we appreciate. And so I think at this point, I, I know we all took notes. We heard people talking about one-way on the wharf and expanding into the finger pier, possibly for tables, a kiosk or a security guard or someone at the beginning of the wharf. Lots of ideas. Masks were brought up. It's my experience that our mask compliance is very, very high on the wharf. Well, in general, in fact, in, in our neighborhoods, on Cannery Row, everywhere I go, the mask compliance is quite high. But that doesn't mean it can't be better. So we certainly appreciate all of those recommendations. So council, what kind of direction would you like to give to our city manager? He's all ears, as well as all of us. So anyone like to start? Councilmember Dan, please.
Yeah, because of the public comment, I have a couple more questions for staff, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yes, please.
I'm wondering, staff, and I'm sure this has probably been asked to you several times, what is the capacity of the wharf? If we were on any given occasion, let's, let's not say the weekday, because that's not what we're talking about. I'm talking about the weekend. What is the actual capacity? Just like gyms and, and other facilities have capacities, or a sports center, what is the wharf's capacity?
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good question. We don't have the number ready. We, we ran some quick occupancy numbers based on what is allowed in the shops, what is allowed in the restaurants. The number probably is in the three and a half to four thousand people range if you count the seating capacity that they have inside the restaurants, as well as the occupancy that, that is allowed per fire code in retail stores, et cetera. So I cannot give you a, a clear number on that right now because we, 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 we struggle to, to put that data together. But if you count all the seats in the restaurants, if you count everything, it might be, and you count, of course, the employees that, that are in the kitchen and in the restaurant themselves serving, the number is probably between three to four thousand people.
And, and obviously, it's a lot less because we're not in, we're not dining inside. So I, I understand that. The second question is, you mentioned about Pier 39 in Santa Monica and their crowd controls. Are they similar to the crowd controls we do now? Or are they guiding by? I didn't hear what the controls were.
They, yeah, it's, they, they have crowd control measures in place that they are to a degree limiting the numbers of people coming onto the pier. But when you, when you go behind the scenes and try, try to find out for the pier in Santa Monica, Santa Monica just, just has about eight million visitors per year in Santa Monica. So a great deal goes onto the piers. They have some of the entertainment venues closed because it's, it's prohibited by law. But their main concern were egress issues because of several entries there to that point. And so there is no real number that I can tell you that Santa Monica shuts it off at fifteen hundred people or two thousand people. We don't know that number. On Pier 39, it's, it's similar that they have limited it. They have counted what they could have inside all the different stores. And I think they have, again, an entrance system at the head of Pier 39 that is regulating to a degree the crowds that they see go in and out. And since, since you asked, Councilmember Albert, we, we put together a, a quick calculations that, that I want to share with you, since this appears to be of interest for the council. And if you allow me, it shows you the complexity of coming up with a number and kind of explains that also to a certain degree. And so I'll, I'll try to share the, the, the screen with you again. And, and bear with me because this involves some math. So, so we, we tried to come up with a calculation. We know that we have one hundred eighteen thousand square feet on Wharf Number One. And we know that about thirty-three, thirty-four thousand of those square feet is, is open space. And we, we know that the requirement is six feet apart. And now six feet apart means that there is a circle around you of six feet. And that brings back memories to, to, I think, calculus one, is it? What, what is being taught here for that? And, and it's pi times r squared. So it tells you by applying that formula that we could apply about one thousand one hundred ninety-six folks on the wharf if we just use a straightforward COVID-19 occupancy model. But here, here, here comes the, the, the interesting part in that. Family units, you will not require your wife to walk six feet behind you. So they will walk in, in that six circle, six feet circles. If, if we say, all right, let's deduct something from that because, again, families, two, three, four folks count in that six feet. So we, we deducted a ten percent factor. The seats will be, will be occupied with, with, with folks sitting in there. And that's a capacity of a hundred fifty to four hundred fifty people if all seats are packed. You have retail shop there. That's a capacity of maybe an additional hundred folks that are in there. And you also have folks that walk up and down the, the, the wharf, going to the boats, leaving the boats. And you want to have folks also there to a degree that, that want to hang out on the finger pier and, and other piers. So the number is, is really not easy to identify. But, but if you take all this, the math together, the magic, add a little bit of, 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 of some other factors that, that are hard to quantify in there, you end up probably between thirteen hundred eighty to fifteen hundred people on the wharf. Here's just the background of the capacity where we basically took into account the green shaded area for our six-feet diameter calculation. And what you see is, for instance, here we have in, in the back of Scales Restaurant, a seating capacity of one hundred four people that can sit there right now socially distanced. That's another hundred four that have to go into that calculation. At the same time here, you have Abalone Diaries, not in the green area, but they have a clearly defined outdoor seating space with tables that socially distant, six feet apart, allows for around forty-nine folks to sit. So why am I showing you that? That number is not really a hard number, but it's probably a number that points us into the ballpark. And if you add to that the hundred five seats of Scales, the forty-nine seats of Abalone Diaries that are not in that calculation, you end up at fifteen hundred folks, sixteen hundred folks, give or take a few. So that, that is a model that, that, that we try to quantify it. But also, in all fairness, it, it explains to you that this is not an accurate science that we can apply here. But I think for the crowd that, that we feel might be manageable. It might be a starting point to say, we feel comfortable that, that that's maybe a number you can shoot at should you decide to do that.
Thanks, Hans. That's, that's my question, Mayor.
Yeah, great, great question and great answer, by the way. Another council, Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, thank you. I thought we had some great comments from, from the speakers, and I wanted to call out one that was, I think, noteworthy in my thinking. Is the, this concept of the short-term thinking versus long-term thinking that was offered by Nancy, knowing that we are this weekend, I think it's the third weekend in August. Typically, tourism drops off significantly after Labor Day in September. And we are talking about probably Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday crowd situation on the wharf. It doesn't appear to be a problem Monday through most of Friday. The other thing is that any policy that, that we approach beyond probably what we're doing right now, we have to think about the adverse unintended consequences of our other districts and our other economic opportunities. Gas stations, hotels, small merchants, sandwich shops, you know? And that's not just in the downtown area, but also it's North Fremont or it's Cannery Row. So I want to be cognizant of the fact that whatever happens in our policies that we're trying to address the Saturday, Sunday perception of too many people will have an impact on those other districts as well. The other thing is, I'd like to know a little bit more, Hans, if I could. Are there any points on the parking? When we reduced the municipal Lot One in parking, and I think it was monitored, did we have any particular times of days that we saw that we were, we started out at fifty percent and then we got full? And then we saw people leaving and then using the downtown garages or going on to Cannery Row? So I'd like to know a little bit more about what occurred on the Saturday, Sunday trial with reduction in parking in New Watts.
Councilmember Smith, first and foremost, the, the input that Nancy was giving us with respect to the fires, et cetera, I, I also regarded as also interesting and critical because when we scheduled that meeting, we didn't have the river fire. We didn't have the fire in, in Camel Valley. That, that is definitely something that, that I feel needs to be considered. And while I'm on a roll, let me assure the council and the public that we are, that we have published a media release that is going out today or tomorrow. It will close all the beaches of all Monterey Bay cities around Monterey Bay for Labor Day weekend. So starting in Santa Cruz, ending in all states, because also in Bitterwell, there will be a complete shutdown of all beaches during Labor Day. And then that is also part of the secret sauce. If we close down Del Monte Beach, you will have issues, Lover's Point, Carmel, and other areas. So one cannot go without the other, if you ask me. Having said that, the question is, our parking lot was at fifty percent capacity at about eleven-thirty on Saturday morning. So at that time, we were at fifty percent capacity, and we rolled the fifty percent capacity into the evening hours. So if somebody leave, we'll leave somebody, we'll let somebody else in. So that shows you that at eleven-thirty, we were there where we wanted to be. And at that time, I cross-checked with the concessionaires on the wharf. And the interesting was that they still had folks lining up, waiting to be seated. The wait time to be seated was about thirty to sixty minutes. And also, the retail stores reported at that time also definitely enough busyness. The overall assessment was, this is not a crowd issue right now. We are busy, but we do not have crowd. That was the feedback I received on Saturday afternoon at two-twenty. And the last point that council also needs to be aware, that measure cost us about six thousand dollars in lost parking revenue per day. So also, just a little bit of trivia.
Yeah, and I wanted to also note that Saturday, my family and I did go out, and we were down there at six o'clock. And obviously, the power impacted everybody's meal. And as we were, we were finally leaving at about eight forty-five, I heard that the wait time was about two hours on many of the restaurants leaving. So the power outage really threw a left, left curve into everybody's plans. And, you know, and I think the fires with the air quality this weekend, I would anticipate we'll have a reduction in folks that want to, want to travel out for the risk factor because of the lingering air quality. But that's the only comment I have right now.
Good, thank you, Councilmember Ed. Alan, Tyler, any thoughts at this point?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and go. You know, I think that considering or continuing a conversation about, about crowd control, I think is appropriate. I think that there is some obvious concerns from, from many of our residents. And, and I, I know that I've heard a lot of things from people that even weren't able to speak tonight. So I, I hear your point, Ed, in regards to the impacts of the fire and how that kind of changes the dynamics a little bit. We don't know how long that that's going to go on for. And I think the fact that we're in this kind of pandemic experience, we don't know what future crowds look like compared to past years. A lot of people are out of work. And so that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have the same reduction in crowds that we've seen in years past, especially if the smoke ends up clearing. I think if we implement a policy, my thought is that, hopefully, ideally, it wouldn't necessarily negatively impact the businesses. Obviously, we want to be in support and partnership with them. And if anything, it's a policy that will help make sure that our, our, our businesses can stay functioning and don't have a potential outbreak situation that occurs. And then there's a, a whole media thing coming out against it. I think it's appropriate to move forward with something. I, I don't know what's appropriate, but, but in my mind, I see kind of somebody just controlling the number of folks that come in and off the, off the wharf. And Hans, when you had pulled up the, the slide and you were showing the map of the area that for the public spaces, one of the things that I was thinking about is when you go to the, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to say it. When you go down the wharf and you, and you take a right, past the whale-watching stations there, that part back there, that whole other side of the H, I guess, if you will, of the wharf, that is not frequented as much as that front part of the wharf, which is very, it's, it's the narrowest part of the wharf. And that's where the, that's where the concern, I think, is when we're having this conversation. It's not even actually at the end of the wharf, I would say, if you went straight down. And so I think for us to use the entire space to come up with what an appropriate capacity is, isn't appropriate because that's assuming that everybody was divided up evenly spaced apart, and they were all moving six feet socially distanced apart from the entire wharf. So not to say that we're going to avoid all of those situations, but I think creating a, a safer environment for our residents and our visitors alike and our, the employees that work on the wharf is a very appropriate, prudent, responsible act. And I hope that we can continue having a dialogue on this subject.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyler. Councilmember Dan, or Councilmember Alan? We'll let Alan get his, then we'll go to Dan. Thank you.
Yeah, so this council has always said public safety is our number one priority. And I think for me, when I see the images that I've seen, I don't think we can say we are taking care of public safety in those circumstances. It's good that people were wearing masks. I mean, I think that's a testimony to the wisdom of the council in passing our mask ordinance. But you need to have both six feet and a mask. And it's, 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 to me, that public safety has to be our number one concern. So I favor us moving forward with some kind of direction to staff about limiting the number of people. I agree with that. I, I don't think it's an everyday need. I think it's on the week, you know, Friday through Sunday. And as far as how we do it, I don't necessarily favor trying to basically manipulate people by limiting parking or limiting the beach. That's not, I mean, it sounds like the beach sometimes is an issue. That's a whole separate one that I think requires maybe some different strategies to think about. But I don't like the idea that somehow we're going to limit the beach access as a way of somehow limiting congestion on the wharf. First of all, I think our residents, they really value being able to go to the beach to be able to deal with the pandemic themselves. So, I mean, I, that's a concern. So I mean, I, that's a concern that we don't make beach access for residents impossible. But getting back to the wharf, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to necessarily impact the businesses that much because we, there's either two ways we could do it. Again, I don't think it's that complicated, quite honestly. You calculate what is the capacity for the various businesses and that's the number. I don't really like trying to do the space. I think that whole calculation was a little, the potential for not being really all that accurate. Just calculate what is the maximum capacity? That might be a starting point, but then Hans also mentioned, look, the reality is a reasonable person, a reasonable staff person looking there should be able to see, is the congestion such that people are not able to keep a reasonable distance? If it is, they put the thing across and they don't let folks on until somebody leaves. To me, it's really that simple. And, and, and if, the other thing about the parking, if we're really losing $6,000 a day, I would say don't limit the parking, but spend that money on a staff person who's going to monitor traffic on, on the wharf. So that's my thought. I, I trust that we, we've got staff people who can make a judgment. In terms of the fire, we don't know how that's going to affect things. And we, and as Tyler said, we don't really know because of the pandemic, whether this is going to be a normal year. I'd really rather have the policy or the direction in place. And then if it turns out we don't need it, you know, Hans can make that adjustment and, and change the staffing. But I think we, we don't want to be behind the eight ball and then Labor Day comes and we got huge crowds and it's not safe. And we could have done something. So that's how I feel.
Thank you, Alan. Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clyde. You know, I just want to bring up a couple of points and, and one is that there are wharf businesses that are being proactive. And they are putting social distancing and, and face masks requirements. And so it's definitely not their fault the wharf is so popular because it is a popular place to go. And I just don't want to, I would just want to make sure that our businesses understand that we do support you, especially on the wharf. You know, we're all used to going to, now we're used to going to stores that do limit people coming in. It's not a practice, it's, it's brand new. So I think by putting, by introducing the amount of people on the wharf, I don't think people will reject that because they're already used to as it is. So I, I like the idea of, of putting some type of number on the wharf. And another reason I think is that you have to assume that large crowds on the wharf do not equate to dollars spent on the wharf. Better put, the wharf can become oversaturated with tourists where it's no longer a benefit to the businesses at all. If there's too many people on the wharf, then they're not necessarily going into those businesses because it's too busy. Let's talk.
I got, I just want to jump right onto that. I think that we may be scaring people away, especially maybe potentially high dollar tourists that want to enjoy the, the restaurants and the businesses on the wharf and in other areas. But they're hesitant to do it because they see these huge crowds. Probably a lot of these families or folks aren't actually going to eat in the restaurant. So I think that there is value there in us being a little bit proactive here. And I just wanted to say one more thing in regards to Alan's comment about the beach. And I know it's a little bit separate, but it does fall under the conversation of crowd control. And, you know, I'm not sure of the solution, but I, but I also agree with Alan. And I've heard from a lot of locals that kind of see the, the beach as some level of sanctuary amongst all this chaos and being locked up in their homes. But one really interesting idea that we all saw in, in Santa Cruz that they did a few months back was closing it down during certain hours of the day. And that way, it does create an attraction for folks that want to come here from other parts of California. And then it keeps it open if they want to go on a walk early in the morning or when the sun is setting, you know. So I think if there's an opportunity there for us to kind of create some parameters that, that provide some more safety. And I, I, I'm sorry, I will say one, one more thing. It, it bothers me a little bit about this idea that if people feel unsafe, that they should just stay home. I, I think that that's just not fair to say. So it's okay for us to say that everybody else that's in our public spaces, it's okay for them to be in an unsafe environment. It's just, it doesn't make sense and it's not fair to those that are trying to do the right thing and are trying to practice social distancing. So I think that it's, it's incumbent upon us to be a little bit more clear and, and structured about how we go about doing this. This is a tough conversation. Some people, some people don't want to wear masks at all and, and think that this is a hoax and, and other people are scared to death. And so we're in a really tough position as decision makers about how to handle this. And I think it's appropriate for us to be a little bit more aggressive here in how we try to create some protection measures for our community and guests.
Thank you, Tyler, for your comments. If I can just kind of finish up a couple of mine.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
No, this is great.
That's okay. You know, the other thing that's really difficult is, is restricting visitors from spending money in businesses. I mean, that's, that's not a very good business model, to be honest with you. But I understand, it's, it's like my daughter going into a candy store and telling her not to touch anything. And that's what's happening down on the wharf. They're there, but they're just not spending any money, at least going into some of the places because it's so packed. But safety, as Alan brings up, safety is, is probably the most important part of, of our city. And I, and I do agree that maybe we should limit the amount of people on the wharf. But I don't know what that looks like, whether we'll be responsible for putting somebody at the end of the wharf. Is it the same model they use at a Costco or, or whatever? I don't know. But I do like the idea of walking a two-way street, you know, where they're going back and forth. That, that makes a lot of sense to me instead of one way. So I think that's it, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, thank you very much for the extra time. I wanted to call out, you know, we're all kind of wondering, well, why, why is it so crowded on Saturday and Sunday? And when you look at the, the roadmap of what folks live with, and I've seen the photos, some, some are not necessarily as accurate as they could be because they're side, side a little bit, you know, a little bit distorted. But it's definitely, it's busy. And when I got down there Saturday at six o'clock, it was pleasant and it was not, not too overly crowded. When we, when we walked off, it was definitely unique because of the power outage. So folks were looking for a place to get meals. I wanted to point out, the reason it's so obviously crowded to the eye is you've got the only services outside. So we know we have empty seats in every one of the restaurants. I've always heard that the number is about 1,400 on the inside seating for all the restaurants. Don't know if that's accurate or not. But that means 100% of diners are outside at tables that are also in that photograph when a photograph is taken down the wharf. So that narrows the pathway in the middle and it's maintained at, I think, 20 feet for fire apparatus to be able to get down, should they have to get down through and tables not have to be moved. And it's been 100, 105, 110 in all parts of California, especially in San Joaquin. And a lot of folks come from the valley. They're coming from Fresno, San Joaquin, Madera. And I run into a lot of folks, they're getting out of the heat. And I'm concerned that if we go too aggressive on the beaches, I think Labor Day is, is an exemption. I think that that's probably why it's like we did July 4th. But I don't want to be overly aggressive on the only place that some of the folks can go to get out of the heat. I think the person that does come down the wharf, and Tyler, I want to sort of counter back and give a little bit of an alternative thinking here. If you get to a place that's too crowded and, and maybe you didn't make a reservation or you waited too long and you're, you're arriving and it's prime time. I mean, I don't go to Costco at five o'clock. You know, I go when their crowds aren't there. But when you arrive and you look down and it looks too, too crowded for you and, and you're wearing a mask and everybody else is wearing a mask, you have a decision that you can make. You can either go down into the crowd or you can come back on a Friday morning at 11 o'clock when it's not crowded. So the consumer does have the responsibility to make an informed decision. And it's difficult when you're fighting the heat and the crowds that are coming and it's a popular place to come. And Canary Row gets it as well. So there is a responsibility on both parties, the consumer as well as the city has a big responsibility. And the operators on the wharf have a responsibility. And they are stepping up to do what they can to serve the minimum number of plates that they can for lunches and dinner on the very few places that they can, which is only in the outside dining. So I don't want to lose that. I don't want to lose the business. I don't want to lose the $6,000 a day in parking. But I do want to carefully, you know, monitor what's happening on Saturday and Sunday so that it does not make it untenable for crowds. I think Sunday, there was a decline in the congestion because of the reduction in parking. We had an aberration with the power outage. We haven't really seen a full weekend of normalcy under conditions that are reduction in parking. So I kind of like to see, see how that would work on a Saturday, Sunday without a power outage to see if we do see a decline in, in the, the traffic down there. So I don't have a clear policy in my mind that I would suggest to Hans, other than keep up with the parking. One other thing, the operators all have websites. They utilize social media. I think that they would probably step up and participate in advertising in a different way. I know many of the operators do take reservations, highly recommended. They're using all kinds of social media to receive those, of those reservations. So distracted or discouraging queuing up in front of the restaurants while they're waiting for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, is the part that I think the operators can jump on to try and market to discourage that piece. And I think with a few more days and collaboration with the operators, I, I would like to see some initiatives coming from the Wharf Association and the operators to see if they can ramp up some of the advertising on social media to make sure people need to make the reservations in advance. There's no space for queuing up and alert those travelers that are coming to the wharfs on the weekend.
And Councilmember Tyler.
Yeah, Ed, I, I just want to say, I agree with you 100% that there is a need for responsibility on all sides. I was just making sure to highlight the need for, for our responsibility. That's all. I, I don't think we can point the finger at, at the individual and say it's, you know, you need to make that call yourself, which is true. I think that's, that's accurate. I think the consumer does need to make that choice. But it's also our responsibility to, to keep the public safe. So I, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were equitably addressing the issue.
Yeah, can't argue with that.
Do we need a motion or is it really not in order because this is?
No, it's, Alan, it's, it's, it's direction. And if, if I'm going to try to summarize, the last time I did this, I was, I was very nicely corrected, which I have no problem with that. I've been married many years. I'm used to being corrected. She's, did you hear that, Dottie?
Your punishment will be you have to grow a full beard.
Thank you very much. But I'm in a concurrence. I, I think the, the preliminary work by our staff to figure out what the capacity, the safe capacity of Wharf One is, is paramount. And secondly, I think we're going to have to limit the number of people that can be on the wharf. It's a model that, for example, Trader Joe's has practiced. And interestingly enough, over the months, it's leveled off where there's hardly anybody waiting anymore. They have figured it out. And I think that would happen on the wharf. I, I think Ed Smith is our partners, the operators on the wharf need to think about how they can be partners in this. Is it reservations? Is, hey, you've got an hour wait. I suggest that you go for a walk someplace else and not stay on the wharf. I, I think that would really help. But I, I think it all boils down to how many people we can have safely on the wharf. I think Alan summarized that, Dan, Ed, Tyler summarized that very well. How we do that? Do we do it with a security guard? Do we do it with city staff? Or do we do it with the Wharf Association who actually take reservations at the mouth of the wharf? I don't know. But again, we don't know what's going to happen. We have the fires. Once winter hits, it's, the problem's going to go away, especially, I really feel for Pacific Grove, Carmel, Monterey and all the outdoor dining, once the bad weather hits, it's going to be horrendous for them economically. But we have to do something now. And I think the key is how many people can we have safely on the wharf? And, and so if we could give that direction to our staff, they can figure out how, how to do that. Because we could talk about beaches, we could talk about parking, those are peripheral. It's limit the number of people on the wharf. So if I went down to the wharf as a visitor and you're going to have to wait, probably take 10 or 15 minutes to get on the wharf, do you have a reservation? Okay, with whom? You check a, check it off. Very good. You're going to, on a boat, fine. So those are the kind of details that the operator's going to have to provide us. But that's kind of what I'm hearing everybody say. Bottom line is, people are not social distancing on the wharf on the weekends. They're shoulder to shoulder. We try to walk down there. I'll take a look and we walk the rec trail. And I won't go on the wharf with that, in that situation. So I, I think that's the direction I'm hearing from the council. Let's give the staff the tool. If they need the crescent wrench, they can get it out. It's ready to go. Anybody want to add to that or see it differently?
That sounds good. I did just want to bring up because I saw the video of the trash on Del Monte Beach and that's not really what we're talking about. But I, I just want to ask our staff to, I know we've got staffing shortages in parks and rec. I don't know if we need more garbage cans there. I don't know if, just again, on weekends, that's something we've just got to plan to address. But the trash is a problem.
Yeah, you're right. It's all over because so many people are going takeout. City manager, do you have enough direction from the public and the council at this point?
Yes, thank you very much. We have no staffing reductions in the, in the weekends of trash collection there. And I hate to be as precise as I am, but that trash is not a COVID-19 trash. That's unfortunately an event that, that repeats itself in the summertime. It might be a little bit worse now if, 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 if people don't want to touch. And because voluntary picking up is probably not there to that extent anymore. But, but we always have some sort of trash issues. However, having said that, I will ensure that, that we have maybe extra patrols there for the trash. Let me just repeat what I hear you say, councilists, you're interested in a safe capacity and basically try to define that number. It's very clear that you like the approach of the reasonable person. You see, you, you know, there's a crowd when you see it. That requires us to have some sort of a monitor there. And you ask us also to work together with the operators to come up with that capacity. And, and, and I think there are also good indicators that will help us to do that, to fine tune that. And I, I want to just say one other thing and that is not to disappoint Councilmember Haffer too much, but I, we felt that limiting the parking capacity had really a positive effect on the wharf crowds without impacting businesses. And I want to keep that as an option in our toolkit. And I don't want to disappoint the council there if we are limiting parking there. But we felt that this was a positive measure to limit crowds. And if our objective is limiting crowds, I would not like to exclude that. So I just wanted to, to, to share that with, with the council as well. That's, and if I missed anything, you please let me know. But I think the, the times that the monitor start is probably something right now at 10 o'clock in the morning. And I would also. And uh, I would also work with the Wharf Association to find out what is a good time to end it. Um, because at certain times, probably the the wharf goes to sleep and we don't need a monitor there anymore.
Okay, good. So at this point, you would take all of the public and council input, come back to us with a program? And how to implement it?
Well, council, it's uh, if I come back with a program that will be September first, directly prior to Labor Day weekend, I I think um, uh, I I can do that, but that means that that then you have another council meeting about that and we will implement it for Labor Day weekend where we close already the beaches. I would rather prefer to to start working with the wharf right away and see if what what we can do. And again, uh, we will see the effects of the fire this weekend and if if the star, if the if the uh, sky clears, uh, we will see that. If not, we have that effect. Then the next weekend, we are ready to roll out. I would translate all the results into an emergency order that that I would authorize as the Director of Emergency Services and will bring back that measure to you in in September, uh, at first meeting in September to ratify. As as always, of course, I will do everything possible to keep you informed and not disappoint you and not letting you know in a timely fashion.
Okay, that that sounds really good to me. Uh, everybody okay with that?
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I I heard Hans say he's going to collaborate with the Wharf Association. It does represent all the merchants, but I think a a key factor to keep in mind is that uh, there are some small operators that benefit out of this concept of, you know, when there's compaction and the restaurants are maybe at capacity and they're outside dining. Some of the smaller operators, I don't want to overlook them and I want to make sure that they're they're able to participate somehow. Uh, and they don't, they don't become the victims in us concentrating too much on just this registration concept for the diners. We've
Understood.
I just, uh, the message is I think you're you're on the same track. It's a collaboration to make sure that we're uh, include including all those uh, that are really struggling to just get through this uh, and pay their bills and keep their employees working. Thank you.
I appreciate your help, council.
Yes, very good. Let's uh, reconvene at six ten in nine minutes, please. As we have an another very elaborate uh, is that fine with everybody? We'll see you in nine minutes. Okay, thank. Uh, welcome back everyone. Our next item is to adopt an emergency ordinance to temporarily prohibit residential evictions and residential rent increases related to COVID nineteen. I want to thank uh, all of our council members for bringing this to the attention of our city staff and our city staff as well, being responsive to many residents expressing the need for this action. And a- as before, uh, it's complicated. In fact, there was a movie called that. Remember that one? It's complicated. So we have to take a look at what is within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. What what can we do? The state at this point, and I know uh, our very learned as city attorney is going to share with us here pretty soon, the complications. But there are our state laws and then there's county ordinances, a lot of factors that go into this. So we as a council, I think, want to do whatever we can within our power to make sure that during this pandemic, that uh, renters are protected. So I want to thank all of you for bringing that to our attention, asking this to be agendized. In the short term, we'll have to see what the state does as far as extending past September thirtieth. So we'll see what we can do. And again, it's it's pandemic related and it's also economically related. Uh, once again, I, my neighbor who had been left, uh, laid off on unemployment. I was watching the news the other night, uh, where someone had been working for a nonprofit for fifteen years and got laid off. It's not as if someone just got a job and all of a sudden lost it. So this is devastating. So I think we as a city, and again, thank you, uh, public and council for caring so much about this. What can we do within our power to to lessen these impacts? With that, uh, Hans, shall we go directly to our learned city attorney for this?
Yeah, I think it gets kicked off by our community development director and uh, that's Kim Cole. But but you are right. Uh, I'm grateful also for the uh, legal research that went into that report as well. Uh, and with that, I hand it over to Kim Cole right now.
Um, thank you, City Manager and Council. Um, we've really worked as a team um, to address this immediate issue that um, came about this weekend because of an action of the Judicial Council. Um, I do want to turn it, um, Grant Leonard is going to start the presentation and then we will move on from there. So Grant, if you can kick it off, um, we will be available to answer questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kim, Mayor and council members. Uh, give me one second to start sharing my screen and then we can go through the presentation. Okay. Um, so yes, we are here tonight to discuss an urgency ordinance to temporarily prohibit residential evictions and rent increases. Uh, we've done this in the spring to cover both residential and commercial. But tonight we're just discussing res- residential evictions and rent increases. And these are evictions or increases relating to uh, people who may have lost income or had medical bills related to COVID nineteen. As you recall, in the spring when COVID nineteen started, Governor Newsom issued a executive order to allow cities to create eviction protections, which the city of Monterey uh, did so through an urgency ordinance on March twenty-fifth. And our urgency ordinance was quickly superseded by Governor Newsom and another executive order, which created statewide eviction protections. And that was then further superseded by the State Judicial Council, um, which adopted a temporary rule halting the procedure of evictions throughout courts in the state of California. On May thirty-first, both the city ordinance and the original executive order from the governor expired. Leaving the state and residents of the city of Monterey relying on the Judicial Council and their suspension of processing evictions as the main eviction protection. However, last week on August thirteenth, the Judicial Council voted to sunset that rule, uh, starting or rather ending on September first, thereby allowing the legislature a few weeks to come up with a legislative solution to this issue. They felt that it was no longer the need of the Judicial Council to legislate for California, but rather the bat was indeed up to our Assembly, Senate and Governor. Uh, in response, Governor Newsom has extended an executive order that authorizes governments to have their own local eviction protections, uh, and that will be in effect through September thirtieth. So the ordinance we're discussing tonight would be in in that timeframe through September thirty.
Did you want to go in?
Okay.
The eviction protection ordinance we're discussing, it would halt Protection ordinance, we're discussing it would halt evictions for residential tenants affected by COVID-19 financially, and that will go through September 30th, unless the governor extends his executive order. So this would be tied to the governor's actions, so the city would not have to return to this issue if he extended his order. An unpaid payment of rent, in this case, would need to arise from being laid off, reduced hours, some sort of loss of income because of COVID-19, or having substantial medical costs that you need to pay, and they therefore be cutting into your ability to pay your rent. Renters would still be obligated to repay, and this would be tied to the end of our local emergency. They would have 120 days from that endpoint to pay their back rent. Landlords would not be able to charge or collect late fees. However, there are some exceptions to that case that we'll discuss later in a slide dedicated to exceptions. All renters would provide some documentation to prove that they have a financial loss or a medical bill that would need to be held in complete confidence and only used for evaluating their claim of inability to pay rent. Notices, the tenant would be required to notify their landlord within seven days of the rent being due, that they are not able to pay their rent. And finally, this would be failure to comply with this would be an affirmative defense against any wrongful detainer brought by the property owner against the tenant. The other part of this ordinance deals with limiting rent during this time period, limiting rent increases. So during the period of this ordinance, through September 30th, landlords would not be able to increase rent on residential tenants who've had a substantial decrease in income related to COVID-19 or medical expense. And this was intended really to be a limited duration in rent increases while the city can contemplate and discuss a more extensive rent control program. Now, as the mayor alluded to, this is a complicated area of state law, and there are several exemptions that we need to consider. Particular to the moratorium on fees and rent increases, these would not apply to tenancy for residential real property that was issued before, or other issued after February 1995. So properties that were built, that cannot be covered by this. Subdivided interests in a subdivision, this is rather technical, you'll have to look up those codes to see if it applies to you or to condominium that you're part of. But very important, and tenants to know these sections so that they can look it up to see whether they'd be covered by this exemption or not. And finally, this is a basic exemption for single-family residences that are rented out. With a recent exception to this exception, apparently this summer, it was ruled that if a landlord is subletting their property, renting out bedrooms, essentially, they have turned it into a multi-unit dwelling area, and so they would not be able to claim protection as a single-family home against these rent increase restrictions. Now, while we are working on this tonight, there are some pending state actions. Two laws are being debated right now in committee in Sacramento. First, AV 1436, that would prevent landlords from issuing three-day eviction notices if the renter is unable to pay because of the current pandemic. It would define this as a COVID-19 rental debt. And Senate Bill 1410 would prohibit property owners from evicting tenants during COVID-19 in the state emergency, and for an unspecified period of time thereafter. These bills are currently in committees, and they're being debated. It's unknown what fate they will have, whether they'll be passed and signed, or whether they'll not make it out of the committee process. The final issue is there's a statewide initiative on the November ballot that would replace the existing rent control law, the Costa-Hawkins Act, and it would have the effect of changing our local rent control ordinance abilities. Some things for us to consider, as we discuss rent control going forward in the next month under this temporary ordinance, is that any rent control program the city was able to come up with would need to be more protective than the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, AV 1482, as long as it is within the constraints of two other existing laws, which is the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act and the Ellis Act. And rent control may only apply to units where they were not occupied before 1995. So again, more recent construction would not be covered by these acts. Your two main sources of information for housing at the city of Monterey are Kim Cole, Director of Community Development, and myself. We're available by email. We also have phone numbers we can provide, and Kim and I are both typically in the office these days. And so with that, I am happy to stop sharing and turn it over to our learned city attorney, who can provide some additional insights, and then open up to questions and comments from the council and public.
I don't have anything to add to the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Good. Well, thank you, Grant, for that very notable presentation. Questions with respect to the exceptions, the laws, and what's within judicial, our municipal power? I think Alan wanted to go, then Tyler, please?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I don't know if council will indulge me, but I have a seven o'clock meeting, and I wasn't anticipating our first item will go for two hours. So I don't know if you could go to public comment and then come back with questions, if that's okay with people.
Okay, that makes sense. Tyler, everyone?
I'm sorry, procedurally, procedurally, the public is supposed to have the benefit of that question-answer exchange, so that when they make their comments, so when you have your deliberations, it takes that full exchange into effect. So it's a recommended process to ask your questions first, and then let the public comment, and then deliberate.
Good. In that case, there are no questions. No, just kidding. Ed Smith, please.
Yeah, I'll find a quick, and it's probably for Chrissy or Hans, wanting to know, in this last several months that we've had the policy instituted back up with the state, how many have gone, or how many cases have gone to eviction court, do we know? And how many evictions have actually taken place, I would suspect, you know, probably just for cause, but wondering how active have the eviction process been in Monterey, the city of Monterey?
Okay, Hans, you need to unmute.
Hans is muted.
Hans, unmute.
Shall, I shall. So this, this is a quick chart that is created, was created by Cal Matters, and that I just pulled down from a website that Cal Matters is tracking with COVID evictions, and that is dated 11 August 2020. It shows you have since the state of emergency in the county of Monterey, 27 evictions since shelter in place 18. So that's the number for the county of Monterey, and the resource is Cal Matters, who tracks that data from various counties. When you look at their methodology, they call sheriff's departments to find out how many evictions were served.
Good, that's really good about having an answer so fast. Yes, Ed?
Yeah, that's a good answer. And is it fair to say that we would think from those numbers, based on when it started, those 27 are more likely for cause, by nature, for cause evictions? In other words, they're not COVID folks that were put out, but there were other reasons for leases that were broken and evictions had to take place?
It is, it is an assumption that this is a mixture of for-caus evictions, and it does not exclude that there might be a COVID-related eviction as well. But you're right, the data does not tell us right now what it is, but I think it is a fair assumption to say that the majority of those might be for-caus evictions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions before we go to the public? Councilmember Dan, please.
Thanks. Thank you, mayor. So I have a question about raising the rents and leases and monthly agreements. And if the owner wants to raise the rent with leases or monthly agreements, can they, do they have to wait to negotiate that until the rent increase moratorium is over?
So your question is, if the council passes a moratorium?
Yes, yes.
Would they have to wait to negotiate an increase?
Yes, yes. They do, they don't. So I guess I'm a little confused about, then what are we putting in place if they can raise their rents? I don't quite understand that, if we put a moratorium on it. Does that make sense?
For a future date is what you're, I thought you were.
Well, I was just talking about, let's say there's a lease that's up in the time period of the rental increase moratorium, then they cannot increase that rent until the moratorium is over.
Correct.
Okay, so how does this, how does this affect the property owners in AB 1482, where there's a time limit, a time, how does that affect? Maybe I just don't understand AB 1482 that well.
So there, so AB 1482 does have caps in place for rent increases. So starting in March of 2019, there was a baseline rent established, and you can't go beyond 10% or 5% of the cost of living, whichever is lower. And so for 2020 rate increases in the county, in the city of Monterey, it would be 8.3%. That would be a 5% base plus 3.3% CPI. And then in 2021, it will be a 6% total, which is based on the 5% base plus 1% CPI. And the increases can be done during any 12-month period. The rule is, though, that if you have the same tenant that's been with you for more than a 12-month period, then you cannot raise it more than twice during that period. So you get to have two incremental increases, but the maximum still applies.
So if a lease ends, again, if a lease ends in between that moratorium, and that's the only time that they can negotiate that lease, and that's the only time that they can raise the rent, according to AB 1482, do they have to wait a whole year in order to rent, to increase it?
No.
No, so the rent can be raised at any time.
Okay.
But it can't be raised more than twice during a 12-month period for the same tenant that's been in possession of that premises for more than a 12-month period.
So then the only way they can do that is that they, instead of doing a year lease again, they have to go month to month until this moratorium is over with, and then they go to the lease-to-lease.
So the way to look at this is to just sort of set aside what agreements may be out there, and instead, the law, the Tenant Protection Act, doesn't really discuss whether it's a tenancy at will, or whether there's a lease in place. So this law applies regardless, and this is the maximum amount of rent that you can increase in the maximum number of times that you can increase it. So there's nothing preventing a residential landlord from increasing the rent twice between October and December, if they hadn't already done it and hadn't already met the maximum amount.
Okay, then I have one last question, then I'm done. So I want to make sure I have the process correct, and I think the slide showed it, but I want to kind of just go over very quickly. So the owner sends a rate increase letter, just like the eviction notice to a renter. If the renter is affected by COVID-19, and they respond back and say, I'm affected by it, I can't pay that increase, then the rent freeze emergency ordinance goes into effect. Is that how that works?
Right, so if a tenant is served a notice on or after, I think it's July 20th, when, because you're supposed to give a 30-day notice of a rent increase, and so if that 30 days runs sometime during the moratorium, then that cannot go into effect if the tenant has COVID-related income loss or COVID-related medical expenses. And the income loss has to be substantial, meaning 20% or more income loss related to COVID.
And making sure this is not a blanket rent freeze, not for every single rental in the city of Monterey, it's only for the renters that are affected by COVID-19.
Right, so for example, I am fired for my job, and perfectly healthy, not laid off, and I can't pay my rent because I was fired. That, this action that the city council may take this evening does not apply to that situation, and I would be obligated to pay my rent, and I could be evicted if I do not pay that rent.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
And if I may just add, and the AB 1482 restrictions apply, meaning with respect to when occupancy has to be taken off those units, as Grant explained.
Other questions before we go public? Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yes, I just kind of wanted to follow up on that bit about the 20% decrease in income. Is that hard set and fast? Like, do we have to stick to that? Or can that be a little bit more flexible? Because my thought is like, what if somebody lost 19% of their income? So they're kind of SOL, is that kind of the case? Or do we have flexibility in adjusting that?
That is a policy question, and you can set that at whatever rate you think is appropriate. That 20% was derived from, most of our studies or statistics say that income paid for rental purposes is roughly 30% of your income. And so that's why we set the number at 20. We just figured it's not quite as having to lose all of that, but at least a chunk of that might be a good policy point, but that's certainly subject to the council's pleasure to decide.
Okay, and I think you answered this through the conversation with Dan, but the rent increase, that would apply to anybody who has received a notice in the last 30 days.
If it's effective today, yes. Anyone who has received a notice that has not yet gone into effect, that would otherwise go into effect starting today or tomorrow, it would not go into effect, it would pause that.
Okay, thanks, Chrissy. That's it for me, mayor.
Okay, good. Thanks, Tyler. Other questions? Okay, let's go to Nat. Nat, how are we looking as far as public comment?
Right now, we have three, four quokes with their hands raised.
All right, let's go ahead and proceed with the three-minute limit. I just want to remind people, earlier today, we had some very excellent public comment about this, but it was raised during our last topic. And so if you spoke earlier about our rental moratorium and eviction moratorium, we're going to thank you for your input, and we only get one shot at it. So thank you for that.
All right, our first caller is 9717. Hi there.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council today. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. If you could please state your name. Yep, we can hear you. If you can state your name, that would be great.
Okay. Oh, hi, yeah. So my name is Kelly Vidian, and I'm a legal advocate with the legal services for seniors. And I'm here to appeal to you as members of the city council to relax the situation on the moratorium. At legal services, we're experiencing elevated numbers of our senior population with eviction and COVID crisis. Are you aware, seniors are the most vulnerable to suffering dire consequences if we do contracts commit? We have a serious lack of affordable housing in this area, and especially when it comes to the young people. My friends in the real estate business are telling me that there's a very weak trend in the availability of housing, that there are these that are heavily affected by a large influx of people who are relocating here from the Bay Area. Some are in the area, we can now work remotely, but they're buying second homes here, so they're experiencing areas. the worst areas. More of us, when they're not working. This is shrinking the already inadequate availability of housing for our residents, people who are trying to sell their homes, or trying all kinds of interesting things to get their tenants out. Because of this, our number of filing of prospective restraining orders have been reduced during the period between March and today, of the same period last year. I would also ask that you not live with eviction, but just to hold your law school jobs due to COVID, because it is extremely hard for our seniors to relocate, to leave their current housing. Then again, protecting the vulnerable is imperative, whether they lost income, jobs, or any other reason that they might be being evicted. Many people are still paying their rent, but the landlords are wanting to get higher-paying tenants into their units. And so they're trying to get ready to evict a tenant when the judicial orders are lifted. Our county has been elevated numbers of tenants, and our clients are the most vulnerable to this situation. In my opinion, this is a public health measure, and it goes beyond a property issue into a public health issue and higher judicial. I appreciate your comments.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate your feedback. Our next caller has the last four digits of 7406. Thanks for joining.
Hi. Thank you. And I'm really happy to see you all being proactive and interactive on this issue of rent. It's been getting worse and worse over the last 20-some years, but now it's dire. There's word negotiating when it comes to leases coming up, and I kind of wonder what negotiate means from one person, as the power of owning the property or managing the property, and the other person simply needs a place to live. So negotiation is not happening between peoples, and that's a little, it needs clarifying and arbitration. I don't know by whom or what. I wanted to bring out two facts. One is that two-thirds of the voters in Monterey County are renters. And so that puts a little bit of pressure on you, because you're making some decisions right now that are going to impact those renters and those impacted voters. The other fact I wanted to bring up, I just heard on NPR about an hour ago, that the rents in San Francisco and Silicon Valley have gone down more than 12% in this past year, especially with COVID. All of us are impacted by COVID. Some of us are impacted by loss of income. But we're all impacted in one way or the other. And I also wanted to mention, I'm really glad to see that what you're discussing tonight is because of the urgency, and we can't sit around waiting for progress and decide to negotiate between the House and Senate and so on. And so you are looking at taking the decision today. I'm happy to see that you're also looking at some sort of rent control, so that we don't see rents going up more than wages and salaries go up. So thank you very much. And maybe we can look at a rent decrease while this is happening, because there are rent decreases happening in the Bay Area. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Could you share your name as well for our records, please?
Yes, certainly. My name is Mark M. R. Kidd, and my last name is Paul P. L. Page. The N. F. M. A. T. P. R.
Great. Thank you so much for calling in.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Esther Malkin. Hi, Esther. Welcome back.
Hi, thanks. So I wanted to make a couple of points. I'm really glad that Kelly, as a legal advocate, brought up a point that we've been warning of for the last couple of months, and Mark just brought it up as well, that we have this influx of high-salary people that are coming to this area. And as Kelly mentioned, this is incentivizing people that own properties or manage properties to have the turnover of the properties so that they can reset the rent, which is when they're allowed to do it, is when the property is turned over, so that they will be able to adjust the market rate. When you have, you know, property management companies that own lots of properties or manage a lot of properties, they end up setting the market rate. And the market rate is what's always used as the reason why the rent has to be changed. And they never go down, they only go up. So the problem with this is that when these people come in and they can afford these expensive rates, the people who have vacated those units are going to be looking for new places to live where those rents have also been reset, yet they haven't had increases in their salaries to what this supposed market rate is now. So that is going to feed either two things, a mass exodus, which we're already seeing, or mass homelessness, working homelessness. So it is imperative that this market rate concept be looked at by those outside of the arena of the ones that set that market rate, because that is what's going to create a situation that locals that are here now are not going to be able to afford when they move out of the location that they're being essentially pushed out of. I also want to mention that I'm not sure where that 30% of income was taken from, but in our area, people are paying closer to 50% of income. So if you guys only go with 20% income to loss, that's not going to be an accurate picture of our area. That's a national average. And obviously, our situation, especially now with this influx of Bay Area salaries and second home buyers, is not going to reflect reality in our city or in our county. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Esther. Just a reminder to folks who have called in, if you do intend to speak, please don't forget to dial *5. Our next caller is Luis Osorio. Hi, Luis. Welcome back as well.
Yes, thank you very much again, Mr. Assistant City Manager. And the members of the city council, the issue of affordable housing in the peninsula has been brewing for over 30 years. We all know that. The issue has also been brewing countrywide for just about the same time. And it's not a new issue, and the lack of affordable housing everywhere in the country, your staff will be able to tell you, is due to the fact that housing development is dictated by this nebulous notion of the quote-unquote market, which seems to be, you know, the ruler in the capitalistic society. The Monterey Peninsula renters, somebody mentioned, as we already know, are two-thirds of the population in general. And we renters have always lived with this word above our head about increased rent, eviction, the like. The COVID has only compounded this. And you guys are all very intelligent people, and you can only imagine what is going to happen to the economy in the peninsula if the workers that support the economy, tourism, and everything else, all the service economy, you know, end up, you know, losing their unit due to eviction. So this is not rocket science. I understand that there's legal complexities to it, and your hands may be tied as to what you can do. You need to vote to add with the state legislators in support of action if you cannot do something legally, because, you know, state regulations will overrule you. This is really, you know, a crossing for the community everywhere. And, you know, it's amazing. You're seeing in the third world, and you're seeing it here, the increased rate of poverty and homelessness are increasing everywhere, and we're only seeing the beginning. So you cannot just turn your eye back and not do anything. You really need to do something, and you really need to go for the renters here that support the economy. This is really, you know, the point where you, as a city council, need to do something for the community. This is the time to do it. There's no more, we're doing enough, we're doing what we can, you know. You cannot go to sleep anymore.
Thank you very much, Louis. We appreciate your call in. I'm sorry to cut you off here. Our next caller is Ashley Schaefer. Hi, Ashley. Thanks for joining us.
Hello. My name is Ashley Schaefer. I am a full resident. I want to echo out what the callers are saying, really like socially said about this being a public health issue. I completely agree. And also just kind of want to add to the course of voices that on the peninsula, this area has been affected for a long time. We have seen it. It's coming to the head, obviously, in our house because of the local crisis. But I really do believe that this is just taking a first step. And the council members, now is your time to take a step in this direction, importantly, in a way of going to help our peninsula maintain a culture. I mean, it's
You're cutting up, Ashley. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if it's a reception issue with your cell phone. We're having a hard time hearing you. Okay, it appears that we've lost Ashley due to cell coverage, perhaps. So we're going to, we're going to move on, sorry to say. And we'll go next to, oh, and she disconnected from our system. So must have dropped the call. Onto Robert Brown. Robert, thank you for joining.
Thank you. And first, I want to thank the council and the mayor for helping us. I called in previously in regards to a situation that we're currently facing, which is directly related to COVID-19. And I do echo the comments of the other callers. I really do wish that we could put a moratorium on or a cap on the increases that happen while there are not renters in there, which may help prevent that. Our current situation with COVID is really what's most apparent in my mind. And, you know, the fact, again, just so everyone has the recap, they've raised our rent 33% for the next year, and we've rented many people for a little over 11 years, and never been late, and been great tenants. So, and since the time they've lasted, we have written three different letters. We have tried to negotiate, and the landlord definitely didn't accept any of that. They didn't respond to us at all. So there was a dialogue over that they weren't ready to listen to us. And again, we are right in the middle of being affected by COVID. And so anything that can be done is helpful. Although I would ask that we fall into the outer edges of the California state law of prohibiting rent increases, such as the being applied to us as a single-family home. So I don't want this all to be the discussion that you've already had. Forgive me if it is, but before I make sure that's the point, that we're covering any and all available rentals in the area, whether it be single-family homes or multifamily complexes, so that we can be covered on that. And I appreciate that the council unit is doing over this, and that they have looked at it, and I appreciate you giving us the knowledge to speak about it. And I wish you the best of luck, and we'll be watching, and do what we can. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Robert. And another reminder to those who called in, if you do intend to speak, please do not forget to dial *5. Our next caller will be Scott Dick. Hi, Scott. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, city council members, staff. My name is Scott Dick. I'm the Governor's Affairs Director for Monterey County Association of Realtors. My concern, I have a couple of those. First of all, with only, based on the data that the HOMS showed, we have five evictions a month for all of Monterey County. Now, there are thousands, tens of thousands of renters in Monterey County. And you're using an urgency ordinance for an emergency that may not exist. I get what's going on. You know, I understand completely. However, if you're going to just put a regulatory load on property owners, I think you need to also create some kind of load for tenants. For example, if you're claiming a 20% reduction in finances, I think you need to have some mechanism to that some third party, whether it's the Mendo Business Center, if you know that I mediate for them, or Echo Housing, or somebody, your staff, if somebody's claiming a 20% reduction, they should have to show that, not just the head of landlord. The other thing is, why not seven days before the rent is due? Why seven days after? Now, when one of my tenants ran into trouble because her husband was laid off, she texted me immediately. I asked her how she was doing, and I told her that we would work together on this. And my question is, how many tenants have said that they were affected? I know there's thousands of them out in the millions across the country, have asked their landlords to work with them, and they're not, they're not, property managers, property owners are not responding. That would be an interesting statistic. Is it one, two, three, 150? But remember, there's a supply issue of housing in Monterey County, and I won't go into the issues now, but I will in the future. There's a supply issue with housing on purpose to keep people from renting in the city of Monterey. So we'll talk about that later. The other issue I want to bring up, and I know Kelly, she's a fabulous lawyer, she's got a great, you know, deal working with seniors.
And Scott, could you wrap up? I know, Scott, sorry to interrupt you, but if you could wrap up in the next 30 seconds or so. We didn't start the timer.
Okay, no problem. I'm looking at the timer.
Yeah, I know you do.
So 30 seconds, got it. Just those seniors in this county depend on the rest they get from their property. So don't forget them too. So there needs to be some kind of balance. And I appreciate, I'm willing to work with staff, whatever we can do with the association, working with the city, the city staff. I appreciate it. Thanks, y'all. You're doing a great work. Your staff is doing a great work. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Our next caller is Jeff Dabi. Hi, Jeff.
Hello. This is Jeff Dabi. I'm a lifelong resident, third-generation Maracana. And, you know, this is a terrible, terrible situation. This whole pandemic is something that none of us have experienced. I just think we need to realize that these comments about the cost of housing in this area, you know, this has happened because of decades of really improper planning from the state government all the way to the local government to jurisdictions. For the last 40 or 50 years, we have not built enough housing for the need in this community or in the state. So we need to realize, if you have a shortage of supply, prices are going to be higher, and we have a huge problem. We are finally trying to make some strides, but we're not going to solve this with one moratorium or one affordable housing project. It's going to take decades of work. Having said that, my concern about what we're looking at tonight is this, the extension or continuation of the eviction moratorium may be warranted. I don't think we know that. We don't need to doubt that it implies it. Most landlords I talked to, and most tenants I talked to, have worked it out with their landlord, and that no one's being affected during these terrible times, and that's going to continue. As a landlord, we'd much rather work something out with tenants to further rent and figure out a way to make everything mutually okay for both sides. We don't want to be evicting people. But this particular urgency legislation is not just extending the moratorium that the governor has done, that we've done in the past. It's adding to it this little cap on rent increases. And in the shadow of AB 1428, that's a huge problem, because now the city is looking at basically a one-off moratorium on rent increases. It's going to evolve into more. The city now is going to have rent control. Rent control beyond the state rent control that we just put into place. We haven't had a chance to see how that works. We haven't had a chance to see how effective it is. It's just underway for about a year. And if the next step here is to continue this cap on rent increases, or if you let it end in three days or whatever, you're going to see landlords, because of a fear of it coming back, automatically doing rent increases to avoid being shut out, coming to automatically doing rent increases to avoid being shut out coming to, to the future. So we got to be careful of the, uh, the, the consequences of things like this. Our property manager company, since the COVID disaster, has purposely not sent out increases to tenants. Now, that doesn't mean that they couldn't have, but they made the decision not to, the owners did. But under AB 1428, the owners have to put out a rent increase every year in order to keep up with inflation or to catch up to bad rents that are too low to market. So that law isn't helping us either. And this action to put a one, uh, uh, one free yard increase is only an existential problem.
Thanks so much, Jeff. We, we appreciate your comments and, and thank you. I'm sorry to cut, uh, cut folks off here, uh, but we do try to maintain the time limits that we've set and we have no other raised hands for tonight's agenda item.
Okay, as always, we appreciate, uh, public comment. Uh, so council, um, at this point, are we ready to, to move on this? Uh, questions, comments? Uh, council member Tyler, please.
I'd, I'd like to move to approve, um, the, the draft moratorium as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, please. Council member Dan, council member Dan, then Ed, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, you know, these, these, to me, these are really tough times for renters and property owners for both. Uh, there's a big portion of our rental community that desperately needs relief as we've, we've been discussing tonight. And there's a, but there's another section of our community that are retired, as mentioned in the last, um, a couple of comments, uh, that use property income as rental income. And, and I've heard from both sides of the argument, uh, believe me, I have, because I've, I know both sides of the argument, um, and, and which makes this decision pretty hard for me. And, and I want to support the community as a whole, well, everything. And, and I do understand the restrictions of AB 1482, both the restrictions, the percentage of rent increase, um, and that the timeline that, uh, that follows with it. However, uh, for some of our citizens, even a small increase in rent can place them in jeopardy. And I understand that too. I would hope that, uh, no property owner would evict someone based on the situation. Um, and it doesn't seem like it's happening countywide according to the numbers. But I, I really think we need to all work together on this in, in order to find a solution. And so for me, um, even though, um, it, it's difficult, uh, as I said, because I do know property owners that, um, rely on that income and, and they're very worried that by putting a, a temporary uh, rent increase, uh, on, um, as an ordinance that that may continue, uh, for, uh, permanent. And they're very nervous about that. I have to tell the council that there are people that are nervous. However, this is, uh, specifically, um, put together to help, um, our residents and our renters that are being affected by COVID-19. So I can support this temporary, um, uh, uh, rent, uh, rent initiative, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that everybody's being affected by this. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, uh, council member Ed, please.
Yes, uh, and I'm sorry for the feedback. I'm using a computer that doesn't want to work very good tonight. Um, I, I am cautious in a decision like this because we have something that's, uh, where the state is involved as well. And, um, we have a low number, the evidence doesn't appear to be there in terms of, uh, evictions or, uh, rent increases during this time from our, of rental, our properties and, um, you know, the, the rental managers. I'm hearing from a lot of residents that are saying status quo. They've been able to work with their managers and owners. And it's been, uh, very satisfactory where they've come together, been able to make some agreements going forward. Um, Dan has mentioned it and I want to mention it as well. I have talked to several families that have a small, uh, you know, duplex or fourplex that they've purchased. And that is, um, supplementing their social security income. And they do have costs on the property and they're falling behind. And, uh, called out that they did not buy the property that long ago. So they have a mortgage and they have a property tax insurance in, in insurance and maintenance of the building. So there is a definite load on some of our property owners that are dependent on this income. Um, I'm very cautious that, uh, this should be temporary. Um, I don't support any additional after September. Uh, I can go with another extension to get through to September, uh, to give us a little bit more, uh, clearance to find out what the state's going to do. And also to give us a little more time as we try and recover, uh, economically with the impacts of COVID. Uh, but there's a lot of entanglements to talk about after September. Um, this is a complex issue. We've all mentioned it. You pointed it out at the start. We have a shortage of housing. We have a shortage of water. And we have, um, incomes that are falling behind. We can't keep up with the property values to make those payments. And we, we are very, very, um, high demand location, um, desirable to reside here. So many of the cities that are beach cities are encountering exactly the same thing that we are. And the property values outpace the ability for the income. Um, and the city can't force, uh, the values down or cause mortgages to go away and take away from the value of property that's been invested in, um, in the debt service of the property. So for some of the callers that are looking to the council as if we can suddenly roll back prices to, um, to, the year 2000 or something and just deem it with our power to say rents can only be X number. Uh, that's well outside of our authority. So this is, is an open society where people buy property and hang a sign and rent it based on what they have to get for the debt service on the building. And if it's too high, they won't rent it. If it's fair market and there's competition, uh, somebody is going to rent it because people want to live here. There's only so much we can do. With this action, I can support it as a temporary action. Sorry I had to go so soon, but, uh, I feel like it's too important to pass up with some of the comments.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, council member Tyler, please.
I just have one last thing and then I don't want to take too long for sake of time here. Um, but I, I forwarded to staff earlier, um, a, a letter that the county board of supervisors has, um, sent to the state legislatures in regards to supporting the, the state legislation. And I was actually planning on bringing both of these issues up and draft letters to our next council meeting. But I appreciate staff moving this forward expeditiously here. Um, but I hope that we as a council can support drafting letters to not only our state legislatures, but our federal legislatures, because I think it touches this other side of the equation that Dan and Ed are getting to, which is that, that support that's needed, um, uh, for, for the landlords as well. So a, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that the, the most vulnerable people in our community are taken care of. And these are people that are long-serving community, contributing community members, um, that are, just get the, the crappy end of the stick, if you will. Um, so I, I appreciate the council's, um, effort in supporting this. And hopefully we can come up with some good solutions about how we're going to help support these folks in the long term.
Thank you, Tyler. On, on that, if you would, if you could get those letters to the city manager, I can also sign them on, on my behalf, not representing the whole council. But if it's time sensitive, let's get them out. I'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that, mayor.
And, and secondly, absolutely, I support the motion. We have to take care of the most vulnerable people. Uh, council member Ed?
Yeah, just one more closing. Uh, there was never really a place to, to talk about it because we're talking about to, uh, September 30th and it's a temporary. But I want to make sure that we don't do something that's putting the equilibrium between the, the landlord and the tenant on them not being able to raise the rents in below market. I know people don't want to hear that, but if it's a fair rent of, let's say, 1,500 and it, it hasn't been raised for a couple of years, while we have a moratorium, that means that that property, uh, is falling behind. And that's a significant, um, adverse business action that takes place with properties, especially uh, duplex and fourplexes that are owned by a husband, wife that live in town and they're dependent on an income. If they fall behind, we have the state mandate of, um, no more than 5% plus the CPI. So there are con, some constraints in place now that we have not had a chance to see how they're going to work. And I think that's what Scott Dick was alluding to is that we're new in the world of rent control for the state right now. Let's not over prescribe it. So we'll, we'll have this conversation, I guess, in September. But I just want to point that out is property owners can't fall too far behind in rent, rent increases. And if they're constrained for too long, there's adverse impact on the other side of that equation. But those that take care of the properties and they have debt service as well.
Council member Tyler?
I, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun here earlier and I meant to follow up on that question that I was, I had asked to, um, uh, to Chrissy earlier. Um, could we consider reducing that threshold? I think 20% of somebody's income is a very high threshold. Could we, I mean, I, I would say actually removing that completely. I think if there's a loss of income, there's a loss of income. But I think something that would be fair, I guess, to kind of get us to not have to go back and forward with a, too much of a dialogue here. Could we say 10%?
So the, um, the city's power to enact this stems from the governor's executive order. And his executive order does refer to a substantial decrease in household income caused by COVID. Um, it leaves undefined what substantial means. And staff, um, in our housing element documents is where that 30% assumption comes from, that 30% of income is used for paying, um, rent or mortgage. And, um, that's why the 20% number was, was less of a showing than that. Um, so certainly the council can deliberate and decide what it thinks is a substantial, um, sum. It should be more than a nominal sum. So you can't say, you know, a $10 a month loss is, it's good enough because that probably wouldn't fulfill the legislative intent.
So would, would you all be comfortable with 10%? I think that's substantial. Um, if somebody's making $5,000 a month, that's what? $500 loss of income, that would probably be going towards their largest expense, which is their rent. And hopefully they're paying as much of their rent as they can, which is the objective.
Are you're the motion, the, made the motion, uh, the seconder, I believe, is Alan. Alan, are you comfortable with that, if you amend this motion?
But I, I am cognizant of the time. I'm, I'm 10 minutes late. So I, if, if I'd be interested in hearing from other people, yes, no. If you're not, then let's just go with what, what we got. If so, I would definitely be okay with, um, 10%.
Well, I would, I would not. Uh, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, please, Ed.
Yeah, I think that, uh, there was some, uh, legislative intent from the executive order at 20%. I think, uh, we've been going with this since March, uh, at 20%. I have not heard a single person say that that should be more aggressive. Um, but I think that people that are renting have a responsibility to pay what they can. And a 20% benchmark seems like it's most reasonable. Uh, and then that way, uh, they get to negotiate with their, their landlord to try and find ways to stay. But I, I'm not interested in moving that number any higher, uh, higher beyond the 20%.
Thank you. Council member Dan, please.
It's almost like we're selling you a car here. Uh, would the motioner, would the motioner be interested in a 15% instead of 10?
If that gets you, gives me your vote, then let's go for it.
Okay, uh, Hans, uh, our city manager wanted a, a thought?
Just one, one thought for, for your, um, um, discussion. Um, I believe, uh, city attorney, uh, we should back this up with some findings, uh, so that it doesn't look like, uh, the way that, as council member Albert described it. So there should be a finding that explains why, uh, substantial for the city council of Monterey means 15%. I think that will make that measure, uh, a little bit tighter if council wants to do it that way. Uh, otherwise, of course, um, if you select the number and don't want to make those findings, uh, we, we will, we'll proceed accordingly, but I feel it makes it tighter.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would say we can find findings based on the fact that the vast majority of, of renters in Monterey, they're not paying 33% of their income to rent. That's what they're supposed to be paying? The reality is, it's, I, I've, I've seen the data in our housing element. It's more like 55%, maybe even 60%, I can't remember. But it's way above that 33% threshold, which is why I think the, I think we would be justified in saying 15% loss of income.
I think that's a good point. So the, uh, the, the motion has been amended to approve the emergency ordinance, which takes four fifths vote. Uh, and the threshold would be 15% of loss income due to COVID. Any more comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, council member Ed.
Uh, it's a twist in the, uh, uh, the agenda. I guess that this is what happens all the time. You get five policymakers together and we get to add on things, right? But I, I have no information in front of me. Um, it comes as a, a surprise in the end of the, uh, discussion. Uh, we haven't been talking about this, so none of the callers were preloaded to, uh, to comment on this. The significant ones like the property managers or owners are not involved in this, uh, collaboration towards this policy. So I'm not in favor of moving so rapidly on that on the fly. Uh, I think that's more appropriate to give staff some information that they come back to us in September when we're looking at this again. Um, and it just, it just does not seem like it's fair to do this as, as a left curve in the middle of, uh, presentations when it's in the, in the final closing seconds. And it's totally new without any data or information in front of us. So I, I can't afford, I, I can't do, I can't support it. And I wouldn't support the motion because of it. I would stay at 20%.
Thank you, Ed. Tyler?
So just last comment, uh, just point of reference, Ed. I did actually ask it during the question phase with the staff earlier, so the com, the public was able to comment on it. Um, anybody was able to comment on it. So I just wanted to clarify that because perhaps you didn't recall or, or didn't hear me, um, ask those questions. Um, but that being said, I think we do have the support, um, to get it to move forward. So I'd like to amend my motion if Alan, you would agree to, um, that, to that as a second year to 15%.
15 is reasonable.
Thank you, Alan.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I heard the comment and, uh, you know, I don't think it was significant for a lot of people to pay attention to that because we've got public comment with people calling in on cell phones. They're obviously not home watching every, every valuable word we speak, as important as we think we are. Um, I think that that was probably unknown to a lot of people that would weigh in on this comment. So I just don't think it's, uh, it's right or fair to move that quick without any information uh, that's in front of us, that substantiates that there's a, a, a public need and necessity to, to move that. It's been working so far and I haven't been hearing of people being evicted. And I've been hearing a lot of positive stories about relationships being approved and negotiations between tenants and landlords. So I just don't see any reason to move that. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments before we take roll call and let Alan go to his next meeting? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Uh, council member Albert?
Yes.
Council member Hafa?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Not as it's presently written and proposed, no.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Well, that, that, uh, concludes our business. And, and so, um, I thank everybody for working together and for taking care of each other and taking care of our city. We are adjourned.